I'd like to call this regular city council meeting, the Des Moines City Council, to order for November fourteenth, 2019, and I will lead us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please let the record show that all council members are present. Is there any correspondence?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. At this point, we are at comments from the public. We have a couple of people signed up when I call your name. Please come to the podium, state your name and the city in which you live, and you will have three minutes to speak. First person we have signed up to speak is Mr. Rick Johnson.
Hi, Rick Johnson, Redondo Beach. Hello, council. Tonight, I'm going to talk a little bit about the graffiti that was done over the week and on a condo down here by the Marina. We don't want to be another Berian. We've got to keep on top of this stuff. We can't let this sit around too long for other people to look at and get ideas or whatever. It was vulgar and very hateful also, but I see it's been already taken care of. The Redondo Bets Memorial Boardwalk was hit with graffiti. And apparently, from a letter I have here that was sent to the city back in August about the boardwalk, I had no idea about it. Apparently, whether it was coincidence or not, not that... The day before yesterday, I was out cleaning it off the boardwalk. And today, this morning, my wife saw, ran into a gentleman down there that was taking some of the graffiti off the boardwalk. And he said it was his job. I didn't know we had somebody that was assigned to do it. But August to now is a little bit too long a time to have that stuff be there. And I'm going to keep my eyes on it a little more. Redondo Beach Drive, it's a major, major arterial. I've asked before about getting a traffic count. But anyway, what they're doing is, I was up on Tuesday morning, it's about 6:30, and I stood upstairs looking at them for an hour. They're backing up all the way to 287th. And what they're doing now is they're cutting up around the backstreet on Soundview Drive, and they're zooming down that, which is only a one-lane road. You can't really pass anybody unless you go way off the side of the road. I'd like to see if Sean or get a police officer down there on 285th and just monitor the speed when these cars are flying around, trying to get ahead of all the cars that are backed up along Beach Drive. And is there any chance of getting a 25 mile an hour speeds limit or speed sign on the road itself, on the pavement in paint? Is there any chance of doing that for both north and south areas of the Beach Drive? I'm not sure. Nobody seems to know.
We would have to review that.
What's that?
That would have to be reviewed.
Okay. Trying to see here. Oh, the last thing, too, is that there was a seal that was... Didn't give me a yellow. Okay. Anyway, there was a seal at the boat ramp the other day. Two officers came down and taped it off to keep people out of there. While I was standing there talking with them, one guy walked up and said, "I want to pet it." And then some other girls came by and said, "Well, let's take some selfies." Well, there should be a sign there at the boardwalk or at the boat ramp that states that it's a law to leave them, be so far away from them, you know, and not bother them if they're probably waiting or resting. And the mother is probably not that far away. So there, I think there was one down by Salty's. I'm not sure, but there wasn't any there at the boat ramp. So maybe that'd be something we could do, so...
Thank you.
Anyway, thank you.
Next person we have signed up to speak is Mr. Jim Langston.
Jim Langston, 600 South 220th Street. My first observation that I've got to make tonight, which is really, really, really exceptionally disappointing to me, is that at the Bayside Brunch, which raises money for the seniors in our community, particularly those who are less able and need some help in ramps or repair of their homes, that kind of thing, in addition to raising money for children who are disadvantaged in our community, and not one single board member, city council member was there. And that really is not acceptable to me. There may be differences between personalities of some of the U.S. City Council members and some of the people in Legacy Foundation, but you don't take that out on the seniors or the children of our community. That was appalling, in my view. In addition to that, obviously, with the election we just had, there's some change in the air coming, and we'll see what, you know, what that may do here for the city and the people in our community. The senior services being changed over to Wesley to handle, to me, too. This is a city thing. It should not be a church overseeing or overrun thing, but rather by our community as it's been ever since it started. I would like to see that decision, if that has been made, a decision reversed and back to where the city has control and serves our seniors in our community alone. And one of the things that had been planned was to have an ADA playfield area with ramps so children with disabilities and all could get up there and take part in activities in our community, too. And my understanding is that there may be a playfield, but not with ramps. And if you're a child with a wheelchair, you obviously cannot participate. Those are my observations and my comments, certainly for the evening. But perhaps the main thing is that to not see one city council member at the brunch to help our seniors and our children, not acceptable. Thank you.
The next person is Kimmy Walker.
Hi.
You can bend it down. It'll be okay.
Okay. Better?
Yeah.
I would just like to introduce a new community center and business in Des Moines. Kimmy Walker from Des Moines. We took over the new, or the old Tag Zone area, and we run kids, women's, and like all populations, jujitsu MMA classes and kettlebell classes. We have free women's classes for self-defense several times a month. And we have free classes every Monday through Thursday nights for all population. And our kids program is based on citizenship, and we have a food drive going where the kids are doing volunteerism. And I just wanted to get the word out there that we're new in the area and offering the free classes for the community. I know a lot of people are, I know you all have family. I'm particular about the kids and the women's classes. Nothing against the men, but you guys are tough, usually. With all of the, like, we hear in the news about people who get hurt by others and wanting to be able to defend ourselves. We feel like it's important to offer the classes to the community. So every other Saturday mornings, a women's class. There's also a women's program to join. And then the kids program is every night of the week, and the men's and all populations program is Monday through Thursday at 6:30 p.m. So that's all I had. I don't know if that's...
I think, Michael.
Yeah. Thank you for that. You know, we've been working very closely with the new owner of the Tag Zone to help that, you know, be vibrant, and we're really pleased...
He's my coach. Yeah.
Yes, that's great. We're really pleased about that, and we'd be happy to introduce you to our chamber, South Side Chamber, we work with, and some of the other groups. So perhaps we could follow up with you.
That's great. I have my phone number and email list on the sheet. That would be wonderful.
Yes, it is.
What was the name of the business again?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Straight Blast Gym, Des Moines.
Straight Blast Gym.
Yep, SBG. And I just thought, like, the women's programs are super awesome. I know all of you guys have women in your lives. Would love to see them Saturday mornings at the gym. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last person that's signed up to speak. Is there anyone in the audience that didn't sign up that wishes to address the council? Seeing no one come forward, this will take us to morden committee reports and council member comments, and we will start with Deputy Mayor Pennington.
Thank you. We didn't have any committee meetings, so I don't have a committee reports. Did attend, Councilmember Mahoney and I, we attended the Mount Rainier Playoff Game. It was their second playoff game. Unfortunately, they lost that one, but they did just an incredible job this year. And the coach up there is just a pretty cool guy. And I know Councilmember Mahoney has probably got a little bit more to say about that, so I won't take that time. And then I would like to commend Councilmember Mahoney on his work and everybody else's work, but his as the lead for the Veterans Day event that we had at the beach park. This is truly, truly an incredible event, and it was nice to see, what, it was about 100 people or so there, I think, was the count. And so, anyway, thank you for doing that. I think this is your third year now in doing that, if I recall. And so, thank you very much. And so, anyway, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Councilmember Mahoney.
It's been a while. It's been a while. Thank you, Mayor. It's been a while since we've met. I just, I want to cover a couple of things. I know you probably touched base on them. We had that meet and greet at Edward Jones that I thought was successful, where Doug Meyer brought the businesses together and communicated. It seemed like the beginning of a great new foundation for businesses to support each other. Of course, we had the Cordex First Anniversary, who I think is a huge deal. The Halloween Trick or Treat Path, I think it broke a record. I don't know how many people they had, but I heard it's in the thousands. It was great to see a lot of the families and community in there. It's nice that we can have those events like that, the tree lighting, the Fourth of July event, where so many of the community we don't normally get to see gets to attend those types of events. On November 1st, I went to the Activity Center to support them. They had the Buccaneer Bingo. The cool thing was is when you can wear a pirate costume three nights in a row, it isn't a bad week, right? So I got to wear it a couple of times.
People are able to think that you don't wear it seven days.
Yeah, I know. But it was a great event, well-attended, and raising money for the Senior Activity Center was great. The dedication to, I'll let somebody talk about the Holiday Bazaar Farmer's Market and the Mary Gay Park event. I attended, at the library, the vaping issues. The Public Health Department put it on. I think you all got the packet finally, right? All I can say is that do your research. It was quite eye-opening of the harms it can cause, especially the youth. There's youth that are in, they're 18 or 19, that now have the lungs of 70-year-olds, and they're irreparable. They don't recover from that. I also attended the Commerce Department's meeting on the airport's impact study. That was interesting. I also forwarded that deck. We both went to the Mount Rainier Playoff Game. Our hope is that the coach and maybe some of the players might visit one of our council meetings. The mayor did extend an invite to them. We're trying to coordinate something. But again, this is a coach that does it differently than when I played football. He ensures that the players are part of the community. They serve each other. And we had a really good football team, and honestly, after a couple of early turnovers, we probably would have been in the game. And then, of course, I'll talk about the Veterans Day event. I want to thank PAC, Cub Scout PAC, well, it's actually Wolf, Tiger, all these other types of animals, but PAC 955 and PAC 318. Amara Drazkowski, who sang the National Anthem, I thought she did a wonderful job again. And of course, thank you, council members, for attending. Mayor Penning, or Deputy Mayor Pennington's speech was a very good one, I thought. And of course, a couple of the veterans also spoke. And thank you, Mayor, for the loan of your PA system. It worked, it worked well. It did pick up some radio feedback. And then, of course, Councilmember Buckson for providing the refreshments. I really appreciate you there. City staff... And anti-irenes, I actually have them there, in Lyuna 242. But the city staff, Al, Mike Mahoney, I can't believe you hired another Mahoney around here, and Ashley were tremendous. We really appreciate their service that day. So I thank you, Michael, and the staff for providing them. And most importantly, the veterans that attended. It was really great to have them there and be able to honor them. A couple notes that I wanted to pass on is that this Saturday is Squidorama, and I've been asked to be one of the people with the mask that you could speak into and release the squid about, it'll happen shortly after 6 o'clock. So if you can attend, most people appreciated the fact that when I went in the water, I couldn't talk for about an hour. But, yeah, now I get the best of both worlds. So I just wanted to remind everybody that that'll be going on this weekend, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Back.
Thank you. So I'll comment first on something on the consent agenda. Item number three, we got an interlocal agreement with Highline Water District for the replacement of a AC water main, that's asbestos concrete water main up on North Hill. And I just want to say a big thank you to Highline Water District for their aggressiveness in replacing these old AC pipes. The lifespan on those is roughly 50 to 60 years, and they have got a good, comprehensive plan to update those water mains. So Highline Water District and Dave Stanley have been doing a really good job, and I wish other utilities could follow their example. It is an interlocal agreement, and we are going to be doing some repaving, but with Initiative 976, that could come into question. So that's a segue into my next topic, is that late this afternoon, the Association of Washington Cities did file a lawsuit against the Tim Iman Initiative, and they are asking for an injunction because this initiative was supposed to take place immediately. And they're asking for an injunction until a ruling can be made, so no funds will be frozen as of December. They were following suit after Seattle decided to file. We were made, I was made aware of this as a board member last month, that this could become an issue if it does pass. And so, because the board is consisting of 25 members from across the state to get us all together to figure out a plan of action at the last minute was not going to be likely. So we did appoint an ad hoc executive committee to address this, and that committee did decide to file a lawsuit. So that was breaking news tonight on Como, and AWC had their spokesperson on the first story at 6 o'clock. And then I had a teleconference call to go over this. So I don't know fully the legal lingo, Tim, you could answer that better, but the Tim Iman initiatives that have been challenged and have been beaten in the past has been because they are written with too many items, and it's this clause called a single subject. So when an initiative like this gets put on the ballot, it's supposed to have one subject and one subject only. But this initiative that everybody voted on, it had numerous subjects in it. One was $30 car tabs. Another one, another one was the valuation process, how you determine the value. Another issue was where the money can come from. So because there's multiple subjects, it then becomes more than just a single-subject initiative. So it sounds like that's going to be the grounds that they're going to fight this on. Unfortunately, it's going to be taxpayer money. So here, the voters just voted for the thing, and now taxpayer money coming out of the voter's pocket is going to go to fight the thing. But I did want to give you that update, that it is going to be challenged, and there is going to be a request for an injunction that that would be slowed down. Thanks to Vic and Matt for your job at the Veterans Day. That was awesome. And my last item is this Saturday, if anybody's interested, the Genesis Project in Renton is having a fundraiser dinner and auction to help women that are rescued off of the streets and out of human trafficking. So I'm planning on going. You can go to the Genesis Project website, and tickets are still available. They are $90 apiece, or if you have a group, you can get a whole table for 900 bucks. So I've got several people coming with me. But if anybody's interested, you can find that on the Genesis Project website, and seats are still available. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Councilmember Banks.
I attended on the 3rd, along with all the council members, the mayor, deputy mayor, the Mary Gay Opening Ceremony event, which is going to be shepherded in by Highline College, their urban agriculture program, King Conservation District in the Start Zone. The Start Zone helps low-income South King County residents achieve financial self-sufficiency by growing small businesses. And that is also in collaboration with Wakulima USA, which is an African farming and food business co-op group. And they'll be utilizing the site for their agriculture program, and Highline currently farms Sanju in the same vein, so that's phenomenal. Attended the PD Advisory Board meeting on the 5th. At that meeting, which is made up of several citizens in Des Moines, as well as myself as liaison, and deputy, deputy, sorry. Who are you? Gave you a promotion. Councilmember Mahoney is the alternate. Anyway, they went over all of the serious issues that have been going on in the city, graffiti, as well as human trafficking stings, the liquor problems that we're having in terms of theft, and working with those businesses to try and really get them to bring in security. And unfortunately, at this point, some of them, I'm not sure what their model is, but they're not looking at doing that. But I believe Safeway has actually added some security. The next meeting, they're going to be giving us an update on homelessness in depth, because I had a few questions about that. Let's see, Councilmember Buckston will probably talk about the Girl Scout troop. No, he won't. Okay. Oh, well, no. We just, you were invited to work with them, and all I'm going to say is we did a role play, is it related to the children being citizens, staff members, and council members, and it was pretty, pretty fun. Yeah. Let's see. The other thing is, on the 12th, I attended a beer and coffee with Senator Kaiser and Representative Orwell. And I bring it up only because many of the issues that came up at that meeting were around vaping. And the owners of vaping stores were there. And they were fairly adamant about this 120-day moratorium that the legislature has put on for flavored vaping, not selling flavored vaping products. So there's two sides to that. It is, and I'm not on either side, but as far as it goes, you've got those that are suffering from it, because nobody really knows what's going on with that chemical additive in the vaping. And then there are those who are losing revenue because of it. So it's an issue that Senator Kaiser and Representative Orwell will be dealing with. Some of the other things that, you know, affect our city as well is street lighting, grocery store closure, safety, needed focus on redevelopment. I thought it was pretty eye-opening, because it was a fairly large crowd, considering where they were at. And they were at Boulevard Park, which is a very small library. But the citizens were, I think, very involved, and some really good questions as well from one of our citizens from Des Moines. So I attended the Arts Commission meeting last night, and they are, that's a phenomenal group. Those volunteers are really working the Arts Commission unlike I've ever seen, and they're really committed to events that are going to be going on. They, at the Squidorama, just a little bit more, that's an event that they have gone to the schools to see if the schools will get the children involved in artwork. And so this year, it's first graders that won. And so we'll have a first, second, and third prize for these first graders, which should be really phenomenal. So at 3:45, the awards ceremony takes place at the mast. Councilmember Mahoney, we're going to come and get your Maury Island mural. So we will restore it back here at the city. We'll figure out how we go get it. But thank you for storing it for a while. And they'll figure out later where it goes.
It's actually in the bull yard down...
Oh, is it in the, I thought it was your place. Okay. Scott has it? Well, then why are we going to go get it? Okay. So maybe that was a little miscommunication we had with the chair. But at any rate, they are pulling together some documents for new members, as well as current members, on the commission, on member boarding, art event application, selection criteria for, you know, events. But what they've done is actually put everything in an organized, coordinated manner, so anyone coming in has this document that they can look at, and it will help them through, you know, the volunteer process, as well as all the responsibilities that they have at the Arts Commission. I did want to say, related to the consent agenda, just real quick, is my four minutes up, three minutes up? Okay. I want to say that item seven, the interlocal cooperation agreement between King County and the Conservation Futures, which funded the open space acquisition project, which allowed us to buy that property over there in Midway. And what's phenomenal about it, it adds to the park that's up there. So the kids will have more space to play. I'm hoping, and maybe I'm too presumptuous here, that we can get an area where people can come and gather that is not in the open. Item eight, Vets, Seniors, and Human Services Levy Grant. I'm excited with this grant as it relates to senior services, where they're going to be collaborating and working with the Central District Senior Center, so that they'll be able to bring in each other's cultures and bring in some new programming, and working with that grant and working with, you know, those that are also disadvantaged or also need some support in getting that from other communities. And I think that's awesome for Des Moines Norman D. Park Senior Center. And I think the management of it is going extremely well, by the way. And now that we have a new, are you now the director? Assistant Director, thank you, Nicole. You're doing a great job. Number nine, Department of Ecology Stormwater Grant Agreement. Oh, and by the way, that fund will also allow us to buy an ADA accessible van, which is awesome as well. So we're getting to it. $50,000 grant. I'm curious, it says that we are going to be looking at purchasing equipment versus doing ongoing administrative costs. doing ongoing administrative costs for that. So I'm kind of curious to see what that equipment is going to be after they do it. So that concludes my report.
Councilmember Bangs, I just appreciate the acknowledgement of the money Conservation Futures for Midway. And just for clarity, that entails two parcels, one that was vacant and one that had a residential facility on it. And that will, all of that will eventually go to park space. So just to.
I'm going to wrap this up really quick. Thank you, everyone, for adopting legislation for a substitute house bill fourteen oh six, the sales and use tax to increase and sustain affordable housing in our city.
Thank you. Councilmember Nettig.
I'm usually short-winded, but I've got a list of things here. And thank you, councilmembers, for covering most of them. So I'll be quick. Attended with the family, coffee with a cop at North Hill Espresso, taking us way back to October nineteenth. Also on that day was the First Annual Green Des Moines Day at Kitty City Park on the nineteenth, put on by Forterra and the Port of Seattle. And the turnout was amazing. The weather didn't scare anybody away. I think I got a little dirty pulling ivy and the rest of the fam, well, my oldest and I pulled ivy and the rest of the family planted trees. So and it was a great, great event. Look forward to the next years. Also, on the twenty-fifth, the Highline Schools Foundation Annual Auction and slash Oktoberfest this year, they brought in forty-two thousand dollars. You touched on the holiday market. I wasn't able to attend. My brother was getting married, so we were golfing as a bachelor party. So the wife and kids and sister-in-laws attended the Holiday Market and said it was a huge success and haven't stopped talking about it. So way to go down there. And then fast forward, the Des Moines Police Foundation is hosting shop with a cop next month and is raising funds to double the number of students they are helping this year. From last year, they helped forty. And with the generous help of the Port of Seattle and surrounding areas and the fire department too, South King County, they've all said that they want to take that forty and double it. So we're doing eighty families this year. So donations can be accepted at the website at desmoinespolicefoundation.com. And then, Kimmy? My, I'm the father of thirteen and eleven-year-old girls. And the last statistic I heard was one in four females are assaulted sexually by the time they're eighteen. And for that reason, my girls have been training for the last seven years. They're one-stripe orange belts. And my wife, pardon? No, my youngest competed in July and took first at the rev. She got a gold at the rev. So I will get them down there. The wife has trained several times. She's still a white belt because she just is my domestic engineer and.
She's turned off this?
Absolutely. Absolutely. So we'll get them down there and I'll come down as well. So thank you.
We have an open house on the twenty-third. We'll be there, like, having many conferences and stuff all day for anyone in the community to come in. And anytime they want to talk.
So the people can't hear you. So you said November twenty-third, there's an open house. From what time to what time?
We'll probably be there around noon. I can't remember what date. I have all day.
Okay. Thank you.
And that concludes my remarks.
Okay. Councilmember Buxton.
Thank you, Mayor. So we haven't reported out for about a month. So briefly, I attended over forty community and regional events, as well as board and committee meetings and advocated for policy that benefits our city. I visited and supported local businesses, partner agencies and police department, and I thoroughly enjoyed my community this month. So but I had, oh, and then one committee, though, that I do want to report out about, the Environment Committee met this afternoon, right before the council meeting, and we just had an overview of surface water projects around the city that are coming up in the next couple of years. And then the status of the groundwater remediation project that they're doing behind the shop over there from years of spillage. So that is moving along nicely, wrapping up hopefully in the next couple of years. So good job. So the one thing I did want to talk about is I am on the Public Issues Committee and there is a very large government organization that may be coming to the table and inviting all the cities in King County to participate in a homeless response. It's a crisis response system that the goal is to drastically reduce the unsheltered homeless in our community. So but it's, there's a push to get this done quickly. And before I share anymore, I want to share my story. I have this seat because a magnificent public servant retired it. And so then I ran for the seat. And one of the reasons she retired the seat is because there was an issue in the city that was integrally tied to issues with addiction and the dispensing of drugs to people that needed help too close to an elementary school. But the uproar in the community created so much chaos and aggression and to the point where, I mean, I won't even rehearse the harassment. But so now I'm in this seat and we have coming down the pike an issue that there could be policy that could create a similar kind of vulnerability in many of our communities depending on how this policy is carried out. And so I am a little bit sensitive to how that's coming down the pike. So I represented that tension in this meeting last night. The issue is there, it is defined as a region-wide crisis, but there is also a recognition that eighty-five percent or so of that crisis is in one area to the north. This government that they would like to create, it has, still has governance issues, it has authority issues, especially in regarding to, in regard to citing facilities. Where are they going to cite these facilities where they're going to house the homeless? And are jurisdictions and municipalities going to have the authority to put them where we want? So my greatest concern is, well, it's twofold, protecting our communities and making sure that our municipalities have the authority that they need to respond to homelessness in our own communities in the way we see fit. But that also, I have a great concern that this organization that's coming forward is not really, may not really help the people. Now, the other thing I've mentioned from the days before is that I have a lifelong commitment to the recovery community. So I'm deeply concerned that any kind of homeless response is going to benefit the people that it's dealing with. And so I'm concerned. And many of our cities in King County are concerned. So it's an ongoing discussion. On December second, the King County Regional Policy Committee is going to be bringing this forward and making a decision on the governance of this new, they're calling it a public development authority. But just last night, Councilmember Dambowski gave another proposal where it's not a PDA, but it's going to be an ILA. So there is a rush to organize this thing, but all the details have still not been presented to the cities. So this is what I would like to ask, what they want, Sound Cities Association would like the cities to respond the best way we can to give some kind of guidance to our leaders on what we are concerned about. Sound Cities Association drafted a set of principles and there are six bullet points. It's on one page. And so with your indulgence, Mayor, I'd like to offer to send this to the council members for feedback up to a certain point where we can give our feedback to sound cities. But I'm not sure how to go, what the procedure is for going about this. They issued this draft set of principles last night.
I think at a starting point, we need to send it, I'm fine if it's shared with the council, but I think our city manager and our legal team need to take a look at this.
Take a look at the principles.
And they absolutely do because principles start out as an idea, but sometimes they're not vetted legally. And so I absolutely believe that our legal team and our city manager needs to see that we need. Because the other thing that makes our position the most clear is when we work with the administration of the city and understand the ramifications of any of the proposed bullet points and what it can mean to our city before we go forward with any, any position.
Okay.
So I really think that's most important.
All right. So Sound Cities did vote to adopt these six bullet points last night. And then I will send that to you, Tim, and you, Michael, and Cece, anybody else?
Well, they will engage the appropriate team and then they will respond back to us with any, any concerns or any points of clarification so the council can make an educated decision on their position.
Okay, good. I'll do that. Thank you. Okay. So moving on then to the consent agenda, Items Three, Four and Six are just more examples of how our city is working to combine projects and tasks in order to conserve time and resources. So thank you. Excellent work. Number Seven, I'm excited to move forward with the Midway Park expansion. Numbers Eight and Nine, Grants for Seniors and Stormwater Work. Excellent. Number Ten, I am also happy to learn that this thirty thousand that we're going to be getting as a result of the sales and use tax is in addition to our current human services budget of a hundred and fifty. So there won't be any, any of our human services grants that are going to be compromised by this additional thirty thousand. So and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Just to note, it does not raise taxes for citizens.
Yes.
I want to make that note, too.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. As many of you know, I've been traveling, so the main thing I want to bring up is I had the opportunity, since we last had the chance to talk about things, to represent the city at the retirement of the chief of South King Fire and Rescue, Al Church, at his recent retirement. He's on board until the end of the year. He's leaving really big shoes to fill. So I wish whoever fills those shoes a lot of luck. But anyway, moving forward. Al, you know, he's been in the fire department for, was it forty-four years? And he has held every position within, you know, and that's amazing. And the other thing about going to a retirement like this, so I was there with the mayor of Federal Way, the chief from Mercer Island, the police chief from Federal Way and a number of other folks. And it was nothing but respect for the leadership style. The one thing I can honestly say is that, you know, you hear a lot of things when you're out dealing with folks. People sometimes don't understand why this takes a while to happen or that takes a while to happen, or why can't we do this, or why can't we do that. You know, the one thing I never hear about is South King Fire and Rescue. Never. I always hear about, they showed up, they helped me out, and it's a great team of first responders. And this is not to say that our men and women in blue aren't equally as effective and as important because I hear great things about them. But sometimes you have recipients from law enforcement that are on the other side of things because they didn't see exactly or didn't think about what they were going to do. That's a little different than when our firefighting team shows up. But they're an amazing group of people and we're actually honored to have one of them here at the dais. So that was a wonderful, wonderful experience and I'm glad I could represent us there. At this point, I'm going to move to the administrative report.
Thank you, Mayor. First thing I want to mention is that, you know, I was honored to be invited to participate in a webinar, October twenty-ninth, that was put on by Municipal Research Services Corporation, statewide webinar. And the focus was on building the foundations of a great workplace culture. And I was one of three people who spoke at the webinar and focused on resilience as a function of organizational dynamics. So that was great. The other thing is I'd like to have Dan come up here and talk a little about North Hill paving.
Good evening, council. On the consent calendar tonight is an interlocal agreement with Highline Water District for partnering with them and doing some paving work on North Hill. Wanted to address an issue just so that you're aware of what it will mean if you pass this interlocal agreement as it relates to the initiative, I-976. Later this evening during the budget discussion, we'll have some discussion specifically about the initiative and changes that we'll be making or proposing to the budget. But this agreement is one that we recommend that we continue forward with, and I'll explain why. The funds that we're using for this interlocal are part of some franchise fee payments that the utilities pay the city. So we're able to kind of reinvest that back in and partner with utilities like Highline in this case. There's extensive paving work that you can see in the agenda item that's going to take place on North Hill specifically with this. The challenge is, is that while we've been diligent to kind of save up that money so that we could reinvest it back into these kind of projects, when we spend this money, it'll be gone. And now with the passage of the initiative in our paving program, changes that we're going to have to make in our budgeting process, we won't have the capacity to partner with utilities moving forward. So we think this is a good investment of the money, but it will be probably the last time that we can do this for a time until we figure out how to replace those funds moving forward. So.
Thank you. That concludes our report, Mayor.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Dan. Will the clerk please read the consent calendar?
Item One, Approval of Vouchers. Item Two, Approval of Minutes. Item Three, ILA with Highline Water District for 2019 AC Water Main Replacement Project. Item Four, 2020 to 2021 On-Call Consultant Agreements for Civil Engineer Services. Item Five, Draft Ordinance Number Nineteen dash one zero one, Updating Des Moines Municipal Code, DMMC Chapters 3.84 and 3.85, to reflect changes made to state law affecting the city's Business and Occupation Tax Code. Item Six, Commute Trip Reduction Program. Item Seven, Interlocal Corporation Agreement between King County and the City of Des Moines for Conservation Futures-funded Open Space Acquisition Project. Item Eight, Vets and Seniors, oh, sorry, Vets, Seniors and Human Services Levy, VSHSL Grant. Item Nine, Department of Ecology 2019-2021 Stormwater Grant Agreement. Item Ten, Draft Ordinance Number Nineteen dash zero eight five, Adopting Legislation to Authorize a Sales and Use Tax for Affordable and Supportive Housing. Item Eleven, 2020 Consultant Contract, BHC Consultant LLC. Item Twelve, Twenty-Fourth Avenue South and 208th Street Intersection Improvement Projects, Interlocal Agreement with City of Sea-Tac. Item Thirteen, 2020 Vehicle and Equipment Purchase. Item Fourteen, Guild Property Right-of-Way Dedication. Item 14, Guild Property Right-of-Way Dedication. And that concludes the consent calendar, Mayor.
Take a breath.
Do you need to take a minute? We can pause. You did a great job. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Yeah, a motion was made by Councilmember Bangs, seconded by Councilmember Buxton. Are there any items that a councilmember wishes to remove? Seeing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda as read, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Closed? Okay, 7-0. Okay, it's now time for our first public hearing of the evening. Public hearing regarding the 2020 general property tax levies. We have a staff presentation by our finance director, Beth Ann Rowe. I will now open the public hearing. Doesn't seem I'll make much noise tonight, but that's okay. Begin with your presentation, please.
Good evening, council. Beth Ann Rowe, Finance Director. Tonight is required public hearing on revenue sources, including consideration of property tax revenues for the 2020 budget. The public hearing must be held prior to the property tax certification deadline, which is December 2nd to King County. There are two ordinances before you tonight that are required to levy the city's property tax revenues. The first ordinance certifies the property tax amount of $5,266,750. The second ordinance authorizes the allowed statutory 1% increase in property tax revenue. Property tax revenue represents approximately 36% of the general fund revenue, and it's a very stable source of revenue. Our dollar increase in property tax revenue from 2019, yeah, from 2019 to 2020, the dollar change is $150,569. That consists of our 1% statutory allowed, or allowed statutory 1%, which equates to The other is we have new construction of $91,922, and then there's a re-levy of prior, let's see, re-levy of prior refunds that makes up that $150,000. So our property tax revenue increase has increased 2.9%, and if you, as you noticed, that our assessed valuation has actually increased 6%. What that does is it creates a bigger base by the assessed valuation increasing higher than the 2.9%. It creates a bigger base to distribute the property tax revenue, and that decreases our actual tax levy rate, which it decreased 4.7%. One thing I wanted to note, in the agenda bill, the levy rate I put down was 1.2657, but it's really the 1.1286, so I apologize for that error in the agenda bill. So what does this mean to an average homeowner? If their assessed valuation on their home stays the same, they end up paying $20 less to the City of Des Moines because the levy rate has decreased. Then, this slide was prepared at the request of the mayor, and this is to show when a taxpayer pays their property tax revenue, where the money goes. There's a variety of taxing jurisdictions, and the City of Des Moines is 10% of that amount of your overall property. So there's a big portion that goes to the school district, King County, we've got the Port of Seattle, we have South King County Fire and Rescue, Library District, Metro Park, Flood Control Zone, here Emergents Medical Services, Sound Transit, and then the State School Fund. Now here we have, this table shows assessed valuation, our change in assessed valuation, the actual property tax levy, and the levy rate for a five-year period. And as you can see, our assessed valuation has increased quite a bit through the development in the City of Des Moines, and as such, even though the property tax dollar amount has gone up, that base is built, and so therefore our levy rate has decreased for the city. Now, there is a rate increase for the Marina Fund, and that was set in an ordinance, or per ordinance 1685, and it said rate increases 2017 through 2020. So this is the last year we have that rate increase, and it will be effective January 1st, 2020. The rates range from 2% to 4% depending upon the slip size, and then the 2020 mortgage rate chart is available at the Marina office. Now, the Marina Fund is an enterprise fund, which is self-supporting from rates charged to the users of the Marina, and also to note, no property taxes are used to support the Marina operations. Then we have surface water management revenues, and per ordinance 1627, there was a series of rate increases, 2016 through 2020. There will be a rate increase as of January 1st, 2020 of 5.72%. The Surface Water Management Fund is also an enterprise fund and is self-supporting from rates charged to users, and again, no property tax revenues used for swim operations. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
It's now time for the public comment. So has anyone signed up to speak? Since no one has signed up to speak, I will ask the audience if anybody wishes to, if you do approach the podium, I need you to state your name and the city in which you live, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Is there anyone who didn't sign up who wishes to speak?
Bill Lynn Scott, Des Moines, and I had just a question. So on the leasehold tax for, so there's no property tax that goes with the Marina, but on the leasehold tax, is that going to go up next year, or is that fixed somewhere else? Just a question, if you can.
The leasehold tax, sorry.
All questions get entered into the record, and then we will address them, so, okay. I will again call for questions. Is there anyone else who didn't sign up who wishes to speak? Second call, anyone else who didn't sign up who wishes to speak? Third and final call, anybody who didn't sign up who wishes to speak?
Excuse me, I did.
Please state your name and the city in which you live.
Dave Henderson, Des Moines. Couple of questions on the budget that I'm, just need point of clarification. Parking down at the Marina, do the slip owners pay for parking when they park their vehicles down there? I guess I'm addressing you guys, not her, I'm sorry. Do they pay for parking when they go to get on their boats?
The questions will be answered, and they'll be entered into the record.
Understood. I just asked the question, do they pay for parking?
The answer will come, sir.
Understood. That's my question, okay. The other one is service water management. What does that consist of, and what parts of the city are covered? Because the streets I live on, I'd like to get some clarification on that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council that did not sign up? Second call, anyone else who wishes to address the council that did not sign up? Third and final call, is there anyone else who didn't sign up that wishes to speak? Okay, at this point, we'll go to... Okay, since, at this point, since the question just came out, I think what we'll do is we'll ask the council if they have any questions, and that way the staff can come up and address them all. So I will turn to the council and see if anybody, I see one, Deputy Mayor Pennington?
So I only have one question, and I missed it. So the levy rate right now, is that a dollar, or is it 1.2657, or what was the levy rate?
That's the question.
That's the question, so anyway, that's all.
Okay, is there anyone, question only?
Just a question to enter into the record, it could be addressed in a minute, because if I heard right, the levy rate is going to be lower, and did I hear correctly, it's because of the development we did, like at Des Moines Creek Park and other development? Is that what has caused the rate to be lower? And that's my question.
Okay, thank you. At this point, can we have staff address the questions that came forward?
Should I take them in order, then?
Whatever works for you.
Okay. The leasehold tax rate is set by the State of Washington, and it's 12.84%. At this time, I don't know of any increase, but I'd have to verify that. Then the parking down at the Marina, Katie, can you answer that for the... Sorry.
The tenants' parking is included with their mortgage rates. So they don't pay specifically at the gates, but it's part of their mortgage package.
So I can answer the levy rate question, is the 1.257, it should have been 1.1286.
1.136 is what it was?
And then, as far as the rate, with the assessed valuation going up, the actual property tax revenue is divided into that, and it does decrease, and it is because that base, the assessed valuation, has grown, and that includes increase in properties across the city, but also the development. So then all we have is a swim.
With the surface water question, the way we assess rates for each property in Des Moines is based on impervious area, so that's the amount of stormwater that would run off from that individual property, which is assessed. As far as what we do with those monies, is we operate and maintain our existing surface water infrastructure, we put that towards water quality, stormwater impacts throughout the city, and just do new projects to help with localized flooding. That's generally what we do with those funds.
As a follow-up?
If I have a further question? I don't want some procedure here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can't.
But I'm sure Tyler would be willing to talk to the gentleman.
Yeah, I welcome, we're past the public input portion of this. You are welcome to engage Tyler and ask him any question you'd like.
At what point?
After the meeting.
Okay.
Absolutely. As a follow-up, though, to your discussion about surface water management, I believe there was a question about how it's structured and so forth, and you did address that. I'm wondering, should we help the public understand the enterprise fund nature of it? And if you could spend a short minute talking about basically, essentially, what it is, please?
An enterprise fund is a business-type activity, and it's, the fund is set up to be self-supporting, and we charge, the rates are set for the users of the surface water management system, and that's where Tyler, we have the charges based upon impervious surface, and those rates and all that revenue goes into the Stormwater Operations Fund, and it funds only the staffing and capital projects and operations that are specific to that activity, and that's what it means by a self-supporting fund. Does that help?
Yes.
Yeah, that's great. I just want to make the comment, council, this was primarily, you know, proposed legislation relative to the levy of the property tax. We included the Marina and the stormwater revenues because it's a question that comes up fairly often from the public, that, you know, those be explained. But those are self-sufficient and distinct funding mechanisms for the Marina and for stormwater. The main thing that we wanted to convey through this was the property tax levy, and we just added that, and perhaps that created some confusion.
Okay, at this time, I will now close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Councilmember Back?
I move to suspend Rule 26A in order to enact draft ordinance number 19-108 on first reading.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Back, seconded by Councilmember Nutting. Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Councilmember Back?
I move to enact draft ordinance number 19-108 determining the amount of funds to be raised by ad valorem taxes for the year 2020 for general city expenditures.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Back, seconded by Councilmember Nutting. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Passes 7-0. Councilmember Back?
I move to suspend Rule 26A in order to enact draft ordinance number 19-114 on first reading.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Back, seconded by Councilmember Nutting. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Passes 7-0. Councilmember Back?
I move to enact draft ordinance number 19-114 authorizing the increase in ad valorem taxes for the year 2020 for general city expenditures.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Back, seconded by Councilmember Nutting. Discussion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
That takes us forward to item number two, which is the 2020 Preliminary Annual Budget, second reading, and we have a staff presentation by our finance director, Beth Ann Rowe. I will now open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start this out. So the budget that you'll see is built on two structural components that are essential to the success of our budget. And Beth Ann will describe the fact that the budget for our fourth consecutive year is strong, sustainable, and solvent. And the way that we have constructed the budget, and council's seen this in the first reading, and now this is second reading, is that by utilizing best financial management practices and establishing kind of the right actions relative to structural revenue, one-time, or structural revenue and expenditures, one-time revenue and expenditures, appropriate contingency reserves, discipline as to how we use the money, diversifying our revenue streams, all of that is built into our best financial management practices in order, and the second structural piece, is in order to accomplish the direction, policy, goals, services, programs that council has established for our city and for our residents. So it coincides... So, it coincided today, as we were preparing for this presentation tonight, we received an update from Moody's, and if you recall, Standard and Poor's had come up here about 18 months ago, and they'd given us a three-step increase on our bond rating, which has saved us over half a million dollars in issuance of bonds. Costa Bunny has helped us participate in the SCORE refunding, which saved over half a million dollars for SCORE bonds. And then, Moody's, not to, you know, following suit, issued a bond upgrade for the city of significance, similar to Standard and Poor's. And I just wanted to walk through this with you briefly, because it's fascinating... if we can go on...that the issues that we had identified, the positives, they outlined the positives. Best financial practices, appropriate reserves, growth in revenues, just diversity of revenue. Let's go to the next one. And this is fund balance, almost identical to the PowerPoint slide we had at the budget retreat in August. You can see on the first one, that's where we were in 2014, and this is where we are in 2019. And as we go forward into 2020, as Beth Ann will show you, the picture improves. So, it's just a statement that, you know, the major finance review agencies on Wall Street are using the same information about how we're doing that we're presenting to council, which show this city to be in incredibly strong financial shape after the work of this council and leadership by everybody here, cooperation with the staff, and, you know, Beth Ann, a great approach and understanding of complexity. Shaun's now joined in that effort, and everyone has participated in that. So, we're exceedingly proud in presenting this to you tonight. Thank you.
So, this is our second hearing for the 2020 Preliminary Annual Budget. We had our first public hearing on October 19th, 2019. What goes into making of the budget? We use the foundation of best practices in public budgeting per Government Finance Office Association, and these best practices include having financial policies for fund balance and reserves, debt management, fees and cost recovery, independent audit, and financial reporting. It also had...that we have a capital improvement plan. The city completes a six-year transportation plan. We have our five-year capital improvement plan that covers equipment, buildings, and infrastructure and pavement management program. We also have a five-year financial forecast, and we have our bond ratings. The foundation...this foundation for developing the budget allows for maintaining the city's ability to provide current levels of service, ensuring all new programs are aligned with city manager and city council's priorities, and providing adequate fund balance and reserves. Our budget is a statement of values and reflects the policy direction of city council guided by principles that safeguard the public trust and public resources. We use this budget to manage the city's finances to ensure we stay solvent, strong, and sustainable. Here are the 2020 department requests for staffing. There have been no changes from our previous presentation, but I wanted to go through the FTE requests. One time, we have our higher head program. We have funded three FTEs for the police department. We also have a .5 FTE HR intern, which is limited term. Planning, building, and public works in our Fund 105. We have one FTE community development, building inspector plans examiner. Use the higher head program, which was so successful in the police department. And then, we have our two FTEs for the Sound Transit Development Agreement, the administrative coordinator and our civil engineer. Our 2020 department requests for programs, program enhancement slash increases that are subject to your council approval tonight. One-time professional services for economic development, Marina redevelopment and other emerging issues, $100,000. We have our metro shuttle midday and Saturday service, $87,400. The audio system at the senior center, $25,000. The event center athletic floor, the total cost is $78,690, but we're receiving a $50,000 grant, so the city's cost is only $28,690. And the Des Moines Memorial Flag Triangle at $35,000. Public safety program expenditure requests, ongoing the in-car camera cloud storage of $2,700 a year, and also onsite training for the police department of $15,000. We have one time for the purchase of new in-car cameras, $125,000 leased to own over a five-year period. Drone pilot program of $12,000, an evidence storage container of $6,000, and radar equipment of $10,000. Changes that we've made to the 2020 Preliminary Annual Budget, since the last presentation, we have a $15,000 increase to the Arts Commission budget, which is from Arts Commission recommendation. We have the $30,000 increase in affordable and supportive housing sales tax revenue and program $30,000 increase in the Human Services budget to provide funding and support of regional affordable housing. And as Councilmember Banks pointed out, the $30,000 is coming from a portion of the state sales tax. Another change to the 2020 Preliminary Annual Budget. Due to the timing of November 6 election results, the impacts of approval of initiative I-976 were not incorporated into the budget document. Dan Brewer, chief operating officer, would like to speak to our recommended amendments to the budget.
Evening, counsel. Since the first reading of the budget, we've had the election, and at this point, the initiative is sure to pass. As Councilmember Back mentioned, there's a number of lawsuits being filed and potential injunctions on that. Whatever happens with that, tonight, as we adopt the budget, we need to take financial actions to address this. We're assuming the initiative will take effect December 5th, so it's immediate, and the budget that was presented at the first reading had the TBD money in that budget. The TBD money that we collect is just a hair under $1 million a year. That is now gone. In the city budget, that revenue is deposited into two separate places, and I want to describe this briefly. 475,000 of those TBD funds go to the street fund, which pays for our street maintenance workers, our traffic signal maintenance, potholes, just general street maintenance, everyday kind of thing on our streets. Another 450 or so thousand goes to our arterial paving program. Within the arterial paving program in the capital budget, we have another funding source, which is our franchise fees that we collect from utilities. So, the simplest way to deal with this tonight, as you address the budget, is to...and you'll see in your packet, we've added two motions to address this. One is to remove all the TBD revenue from the 2020 budget, and to...when you do that, there's a $475,000 funding gap in the street fund. So, the easiest solution for now is to take that revenue from the franchise fees in the capital budget and move them to the street fund. That will essentially deplete the funding available in the arterial paving program. There'll still be a small amount left over from franchise fees, but it's probably in the neighborhood of about $100,000 annually that'll be in that fund. So, essentially, what that means is that there is no paving, there is no more paving. Once we pave 216th and the partnership that we just entered into with High Lane Water District, we don't have a paving program at this point. So, that's the simplest way to deal with this as part of the budget process. It doesn't mean that it has to stay that way, and in fact, what we'll do in the meantime is prepare to come forward next year to the Transportation Committee and talk about ways that we can deal with, trying to address the need for paving, a paving program. There's still a lot of unanswered questions as it relates to the initiative and what will happen with that. Even if an injunction is filed, there's no guarantee that that lawsuit will be successful or not, wherever that goes. We can't spend that money at this point. So, the proposed motions will shore up the street fund. There are other alternatives to that, but they are not good alternatives. And if you have questions about that, I can certainly go into that, but this is the easiest and simplest way to address the funding gap in the street fund, so.
So, the general fund...for the general fund, the five-year forecast has been updated to reflect any changes from the revised 2019 budget, which is the next item, the next public hearing, but also to reflect the two changes for the Arts Commission and for the sales tax. And as you notice, the net activity operating revenues over operating expenditures are continued to be positive. That means we're covering our operating expenses with our operating revenues, and then our ending reserve exceeds the GFOA target of 60 days, which is a 16.67. The Fund 105, I've updated this to reflect the revisions for 2019, and from the previous presentation, the impact is that there's a slightly higher ending reserve in 2019 by approximately $120,000, and that carries through 2020 through 2024. So, that's the change there. I've updated the five-year forecast for the Marina Fund to reflect the 2019 revisions, and it...the working capital is showing that it's positive, and it's self-sufficient and sustainable. I know that work still continues with the Tenants Association and then also Mark Bunzel's group, and as we go into 2020 and 2021, there'll be more development, and we'll adjust as we get more information. I apologize. This is really tiny for the SWIM fund. We've updated it for the 2019 revisions. As you can see, that the capital program for the SWIM fund is pretty extensive in 2019 and 2020, so that makes everything tiny. But that is...concludes my presentation.
Okay, it's now time for public comment. No one signed up? Okay, since no one's signed up, I will see if anybody who didn't sign up wishes to speak. Second call, anybody who didn't sign up who wishes to speak? Third and final call, is there anyone who didn't sign up that wishes to speak? Seeing no one's come forward, public comment portion is closed. Counsel, do you have any questions? I see Councilmember Banks?
I'm going to take you up on that, Dan. Realizing the impact of this 976 and realizing the dollars that will be coming out of the two funds, I know we're talking about no pavement. Are we talking about at least pothole maintenance or anything that could essentially damage most of our cars?
Yeah, it's a great question. In the street fund, we deal with potholes and small pavement repairs and things like that, just as part of our operating expense in the street fund. As I mentioned, there'll be a small annual amount that...we haven't calculated what that is at this point, but it's around probably $100,000 a year, maybe slightly more, that we could partner with some utilities on projects like this, or to do other capital projects on our own. But the, you know, paving is very expensive, as we've talked about, and so that just doesn't... it just doesn't go very far, so.
So, the answer is yes.
We'll still be doing potholes, no matter what.
Okay, thank you.
And I saw Councilmember Mahoney, Deputy Mayor Pennington, and then Councilmember Back.
Dan, if we don't move the $475,000 because of the absence of 976, what happens? I know you didn't want to get into it, but I don't want to hear.
Well, yeah. So, in our street fund, one of the primary functions of what we do as a city is take care of our roads. We have a duty to maintain our roads, and so the street fund has to be kept whole somehow. So, other options would be here on this general fund list for 2020...oh, now the laser's not working. So, we have our GFOA targets that we're trying to meet, and that's shown here, and so there's an excess of a couple hundred thousand there. You could take that out of the general fund and move it to the street fund. After that, we could do things like turning off all the streetlights in town. We can lay people off. If we don't do this, if you don't move this money to the street fund, something has to give, because we're half a million dollars short. And so, we have three maintenance workers in the street fund that maintain streets, and then one traffic control specialist that deals with all this traffic signs and all the markings and things like that. Those guys have to be...we can't go any lower than three. If you think about a crew doing work, if you have one operator and one laborer and one flagger, it's about as small crew as we can have on the street, so. I don't know. The options are not...they're not good at this point. So, that, to me, at this point, to kind of...that funding gap needs to be shored up. This is the simplest way to do it. It doesn't mean you're locked into that. We can discuss other options moving forward through the Transportation Committee and come up with other strategies moving forward, if you want.
Councilmember, if I may, you know, in the discussion as to options, one thing I just want to make perfectly clear, and I know you as well, that we have no intention to lay off anybody, and it's our intent to keep this as whole as possible, and that's what, Dan, I think, is very skillfully put together.
One more question. On the Sound Transit full-time, or the FTEs there, my understanding is that money's coming from Sound Transit to fund those positions. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, and I agree on the other...anyway, we're asking questions right now, so.
My questions are answered with your answers, so thank you. Councilmember Back?
Councilmember Mahoney asked my question. I wanted rhetorically find out, what does this mean? So, thank you.
Any other council questions? Okay, I will now close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Councilmember Banks?
I move to direct administration to eliminate all transportation benefit district revenues from the 2020 annual budget, given the projected outcome of initiative I-976.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Banks, seconded by Councilmember Nutting. Any discussion? Councilmember Back?
Thank you to Dan and Beth Ann for being all over this. Thank you to Dan and Beth Ann for being all over this so quick. And this was the reason for the teleconference with AWC this evening because revisions have to be made across the state. There's 281 cities in the state of Washington that are going to have to do something similar in their budget cycle, and we all have to have our budget by the end of the year. So the order was coming out and we'll probably all be getting emails quickly from AWC that we need to respond and make revisions. And even though they are attempting to get an injunction, don't count on that. And, you know, ultimately what it comes down to is what the final ruling is going to be. So thank you for being on top of this so quick because I'm sure there's other cities that are just now finding out what the ramifications are and they're having to respond. So good job, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Pennington?
So I, I think this illustrates how fragile, even though we've come a long way, how fragile city budgets can be, and especially ours. And I, and I think more importantly, what this illustrates is the, the leadership of our staff, our city manager, and, and all of his department heads and the folks that work in those department heads. Because without being on top of this and, and, and thinking ahead and having these plans, I, as a council member, don't want to have to go through another round of layoffs or furloughs. And, and it's unfortunate that this particular decrease in funding was out of our control. It was something that, that we didn't have any control over. So it just really illustrates how fragile our budget streams can be. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Mahoney?
Yeah, well, the voters spoke on 976 and we're executing as we need to. I think staff did an excellent job there. It's unfortunate because I think the true issue was the valuation of vehicles on the ST3 piece. The, the cars, electric cars and so forth that get the $150 fee that don't normally pay the fair share on the roads are where our transportation benefit district, we took $40 on every registration. And the thing is, is we spent it well. It costs a million dollars a mile to pave roads. And unfortunately, that's going to be something that will suffer. The fact that we're making this change to do the bare minimum is what we have to do. But this is the cost of that initiative. Whether we agree with the decision or not, we support the voters and, and I think this course actually is the best way to go.
Anyone else? Seeing no ones, no hands go up. All those in favor of the motion raised, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Passes seven zero. Councilmember Bangs?
I move to direct administration to move $475,000 from the arterial pavement program in the capital budget to the street fund in order to replace the transportation benefit district funding lost by Initiative I-976.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Bangs, seconded by Councilmember Nutting. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Passes seven zero. Councilmember Bangs?
I move to pass draft ordinance number 19-107 establishing the 2020 annual budget for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2020, as amended.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Bangs, seconded by Councilmember Nutting. Any discussion? See Councilmember Back, then Councilmember Buxton.
We're talking about motion three, right? Yeah, I just, I just want to say I'm proud to be, I'm part, I'm proud to be part of the solution to a problem in this city for the last four years. I'm really proud to say that I was able to pass a solvent and sustainable budget in my four years as a public official. I would ask that future councils don't take that for granted. This was hard work. Imposing mandatory furloughs on employees just so our ship didn't sink was the most difficult decision I've had to make, but it had to be done. And I'm concerned, some people may take this for granted, and it shouldn't be. Managing a fiscal, healthy city is not easy work. So I'm proud to pass this. And I'm, and I'm proud of the accomplishment of this city council. Thank you.
Councilmember Buxton?
I hope I don't ever take it for granted. I feel like I've come aboard during a time when it hasn't been as difficult as it has been in the past. But, but I still think it's a boatload of work for the staff to rearrange and to make all these numbers line up and work. So I am so impressed and thankful really for, for all of you who've worked so hard to make this, put this together, make this happen and look good. So, so I guess what I want to say about this budget is the bottom line is the bottom line, and it's great. So we're spending less than our revenues and our structural revenues are sustainable even into the next several years. Our ending fund balances now and projected are well within healthy parameters. So basically, of course, I approve with comment. So my campaign goals when I was running for office were that I would work toward a safe, green destination community. So in regard to safety, statistically, we're one of the safest communities in South County. Can we make it safer? Yes, and we're working, we're working on that. And some of the things in this budget reflect that. Police vehicle enhancement, cameras, radar, drones, evidence storage and data storage, officer onsite training, officer hire ahead, ensuring continuity of a full force, continued expanded coverage through regional, state and federal partnerships and training. Safety is there. Green, we have one of the most beautiful locations on the sound with ample public beach access, 28 parks comprising almost 200 acres and about four miles of trails. We continue to invest in these public spaces while also nurturing partnerships that assist. Can it become greener? Yes. We are, this budget reflects efforts to do that. We've got over $6 million into park facility and playground projects, 2.6 million into surface water management, which includes public education and outreach advance such as Storm Fest. One goal this year might be that, that I would like to look into is to see if we can maybe create some tangible output for our urban canopy program. I happen to be a real tree lover. Destination community, though, the safer and greener to me were adjectives for our largest challenge. Currently, our greatest future and challenge is creating a destination community, but we are energized. This budget reflects a great investment in addressing, working with professional services related to economic development and Marina redevelopment, 6.3 million in park and facility projects, which I already mentioned, an additional 435,000 in waterfront facility projects, another 804,000 in Marina capital improvements, event center improvements, Flag Triangle beautification, senior center improvements, multimodal transportation improvements through partnerships with Metro and funding from the Veterans and Senior Services Levy, central core beautification projects, and additional staff to accommodate these enhancements. So we are working it, and I approve this budget.
Councilmember Mahoney?
I've seen a lot of budgets over the last 35 years in whatever career I've had. I've never seen one so well executed in the different revenue streams to withstand recessions and things like that, where you have a flavor of sales tax plus utility taxes, franchise fees, et cetera. Very well done, very well structured, and very well set up to weather storms, where that hasn't always been the case in the past, as I've been explained when I've looked back in myself. But it's the expense piece, too, that's been impressive. There's no fat in this budget. This is an efficient, effective budget. I see people complain about, oh, government overspending, et cetera, et cetera. But they never champion or exemplify or congratulate when it's being executed well and the money's being spent accurately, efficiently, and without waste. It's what you ask us to do. And this is exactly what's been taking place here over the last few years, and it just doesn't get the credit it deserves. My compliments to the staff, the council on their frugality, I'll say that. It's been an effort. And then just an aside, I am thrilled about the Triangle Park and the landscaping there. I can't wait. It's, it'll be a great entrance to the north end of town. It's always been something I think several citizens have looked at, and it'll be a, pay a great honor to our veterans from World War I. I can't thank the staff and city for taking this, the, understanding the sense of urgency and, on this particular subject and the importance, especially to a veteran like myself. I just want to say thank you.
Anyone else? I have a brief comment. As you're all aware, I've served in public office for a few years at this point, and I've been through situations where organizations have gotten themselves into trouble, not had the kind of budget structure that we have developed here, where you have diversified income and can, and appropriate reserves to weather storms. However, I think it, an important point was made here. I don't take it for granted. We talk about weathering storms, and most people think about that in terms of finance or in terms of economics as being a downturn in the economy. The hit we're taking tonight has nothing to do with a downturn in the economy. It has to do with a decision that was made outside of the city by the voters, but it doesn't have to be made by the voters. It can be made at state level, it can be made at the county level. Any government level that is above us can impact our efforts here. That's why it takes an amazing team to pay attention to what's going on, look at the impacts, and understand them. That's why this council and the leadership team, and that leadership team goes all the way through, the staffing, it's 188 people?
Yeah.
Approximately 180 people plus, as to how to strengthen this entity for long-term viability and quality of life. So I just want to say that it is a pleasure, for the second time in my elected career, to be able to support a budget that really is, I don't want to say the end of the rainbow because we're not at the end, but it really is taking something that was, I mean, looking at receivership and finding a way out. And I, I think it's just outstanding. And I will say, it is, the principles applied here are rock solid. And those are echoed, as noted earlier, by folks back on, on, in the financial houses on Wall Street and those who are responsible for, for rating the risks of entities throughout this country. Outstanding work by everyone. And with that, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Budget passes seven zero. This takes us forward to our third public hearing tonight, which is the 2019 Annual Budget Amendments. We have a staff presentation by our Finance Director, Beth Ann Rowe. I will now open the public hearing.
Good evening. What you have before you tonight is the amendments to the 2019 annual budget. Our items, actually, this is our, our chart that goes with the ordinance. The details and the items are listed out in the agenda bill. These items are things that council has previously approved or have seen or commented on throughout the year. We appreciate working collaboratively, collaboratively with city council to set policy and provide direction that supports the organization and allows us to follow best financial management practices to ensure our finances remain sustainable. And so the, probably the most notable is the change in the budget, revenues and expenditures by fund, and the items are detailed in the bill. I wasn't going to go through them, I was just going to, that would conclude my presentation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It is now time for the public comment portion of this public hearing. No one has signed up to speak. Is there anyone who didn't sign up that wishes to speak? Second call, is there anyone who didn't sign up that wishes to speak? Third and final call, is there anyone who didn't sign up who wishes to speak? Closing the public portion of the hearing, seeing no one approach. Council, do you have any questions? Okay, seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Councilmember Back?
Thank you. I move to suspend Rule 26A in order to enact draft ordinance number 19-109 on first reading.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Back, seconded by Councilmember Nutting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Passes seven zero. Councilmember Back?
I move to enact draft ordinance number 19-109 relating to municipal finance, amending the 2019 annual budget adopted in ordinance number 1710.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Back, seconded by Councilmember Nutting. Any discussion? Do you have a comment from our city manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I think one thing I want to point out in this, Beth Ann mentioned it, but it's really an important concept, is that everything that you're seeing that's amended from the 2019 budget, that's included in the 2020 budget, are items that council has reviewed previously, either through formal action, informal explanation, or awareness that we're suggesting certain changes to what was budgeted originally. And so I think that one function that's really critical, and it's, it's a, it's a result of the commitment of the council and the commitment of our staff to keep you informed and to make sure that we're vigilant in watching the budget unfold throughout the year. And so this is the evidence of it. I think that's an absolutely critical component of why we've been successful, and just want to both compliment the council for that, but also for staff for always being conscious, we've got to get to council with this item, whatever it is, and inform you of what's going on. I just want to make the comment, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Feels like Groundhog's Day. This takes us to our next public hearing. A public hearing to consider draft ordinance number 19-106, amending the Des Moines 2035 Comprehensive Plan and Preferred Land Use Map. And we will have a staff presentation by our Planning and Development Service Manager, Denise Lathrop. I will now open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Denise Lathrop, Planning and Development Services Manager. So the purpose of tonight's public hearing is for the council to consider the 2019 amendments to our Des Moines 2035 Comprehensive Plans. Per state law, we can amend our comprehensive plan once a year. We take public requests from citizens between January 1st and June 30th of each year. We didn't receive any this year, so all of the amendments are city-initiated. This is a type, type six land use action, and the decision criteria is provided in This is a type lit, type six land use action, and the decision criteria is provided in Des Moines Municipal Code 1825100, and that was included in your staff report. That included analysis of the proposed amendments for consistency. So we have three housekeeping amendments. The first amendment is to the Preferred Land Use Map, where we are, are changing the Preferred Land Use designation for three parcels associated with the Havenwood Park and associated wetlands and trail that were deeded to the city from single-family to park. The second amendment is to change the adoption date for the city's Shoreline Master Program, and that's in the conservation and environment element of the comprehensive plan, and edit a policy related to the periodic review schedule that has changed per state law. The last amendment is to the parks, recreation, and open space element that is adding the Havenwood Park Trail and Wetlands to the city's park inventory. So as part of our process, we are required to notice Department of Commerce. We also completed environmental review for the project. Tonight's the public hearing, and then if enacted, the ordinance would become effective on December 12th. So that concludes my presentation. I have some suggested motion for council consideration.
Thank you. It's now time for the public comment portion of this public hearing. No one has signed up to speak, so I will poll the audience. Is there anyone who didn't sign up who wishes to speak? Second call, is there anyone who didn't sign up who wishes to speak? Third and final call, is there anyone who didn't sign up who wishes to speak? Public portion of this hearing is now closed. Council, do you have any questions? Councilmember Banks?
So, the one question I do have is related to the shorelines, where you have moved review and revise from five to eight years. Can you explain why that is?
Yeah, the state changed the review cycle, and so it used to be fi, every five years, and so they extended that to eight years, so it's just correcting toward consistency.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no further council questions, I will now close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Councilmember Banks? I see Councilmember Buck.
I move to suspend Rule 26A in order to enact draft ordinance number 19-106 on first reading.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Banks, seconded by Councilmember Buxton. Discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Passes seven zero. Councilmember Banks?
I move to enact draft ordinance number 19-106, enacting the 2019 amendments to Des Moines 2035, charting our course for a sustainable future, and amending chapters 18.05 and 18.25 DMMC.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Banks, seconded by Councilmember Buxton. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Passes seven zero. Okay, this takes us forward to new business, and this is the first reading of City Council Rules and Procedure Updates, and a staff presentation by our city attorney, Tim George.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Tim George, City Attorney. Tonight, I'm presenting the first reading of our City Council Rules and Procedure. The last time these rules were updated was in February of 2018. Since that time, council has provided staff with a num, a number of proposed amendments, which we have put together into a draft resolution tonight. According to the rules, any changes require two readings, so the resolution cannot be passed tonight, but we would plan on bringing it back for a second reading and approval at our next council meeting, which is next Thursday night. And I'll walk through these rules fairly quickly. Proposed rules, this, this came out at the study session that, that council had previously this year, and this would be a proposed rule that if a council member would like to bring forward a new community event or a project, staff would have, the city clerk would have a form that the council member can fill out, which would detail the proposal, the proposed costs, and estimated staff time, and then that would be submitted to the city clerk. Additionally, in order to get that item onto an agenda, the council member would still have to meet the requirements of the council rules, but at least this way, staff would be aware of the project and have some advance notice of what would be expected. And just a reminder, in order to get an item on an agenda, it's either the mayor, the city manager, or three council members. This is more of a cleanup item. As the council is aware, we can have stu, we tend to have study sessions on any Thursday when it's appropriate or when it's needed, but our rule stated that we would just have them on the first and third Thursday of the month, so this just cleans up that rule. Generally, we hold them on the first Thursday, but not always, and so this gives us a little bit of leeway. This is a proposed rule to our appearance of fairness doctrine language. This doesn't change the appearance of fairness doctrine, but it does allow staff to provide council a notification of when we receive either an application or a decisions made at the staff or the hearing examiner level that may ultimately come before the council, where the council would have to rule on that in a quasi-judicial hearing, and that is where the council acts essentially as a judge. And in those types of cases, the council is not supposed to have what's called ex parte contact or any sort of contact with an applicant that's not here in public. And this came as a result of a quasi-judicial hearing that we had here, and we had a break and council talked to some people, and so we had to disclose all those contacts. This would be a way for our staff to tell you all ahead of time, we've received an application regarding this project, it's likely going to come before you in that quasi-judicial manner, so please refrain from any sort of contacts with the parties. This was a proposed rule by the council. Clearly, the city of Des Moines staff is committed to maintaining a drug and alcohol-free workplace, as all government employees are, and this is language out of the city personnel manual, but that doesn't specifically apply to council members. So, it was raised by the council, but it's, it's fairly common sense that council members should be, should refrain from alcohol and drug use while at the dais. Under our current council rules, we have two separate reports, two separate reporting periods, and those are the committee and board reports, and then a separate report for council member comments. That's not the way that this council has done that, and so essentially what we've, what we're proposing tonight is to combine those two, which is our current council practice. And additionally, so as a result of that, we'd be repealing the language regarding council member comments because we're moving it up into the committee reports, and additionally, setting a time limit of four minutes, which of course the presiding officer can extend if there's a issue of significant importance. This is another issue that was raised regarding the consent calendar, where the mayor will ask if any council member wishes to pull an item. Oftentimes, council members want to ask a question rather than pull the item, or they want to make a brief comment. So we've updated this rule with some proposed language. If this is passed, we would update the mayor's language to ask if there was any questions or comments. This rule, in our council rules, we just simply state that the council may hold executive sessions. We've added some language, which is out of state law and consistent with the attorney general's opinion, that council members and staff that are attending executive sessions have a duty under the Open Public Meetings Act to keep the information in the session confidential, and as the council is aware, there's only specific reasons why we can be in executive session, and the purpose of that is because it needs to remain confidential. So this is fairly common sense as well, but also calls out specifically the penalty and references the statute. This rule is sort of a cleanup rule as well. As the council's aware, we have a number of boards, commissions, and citizens, citizen advisory bodies that also then come to the council meetings to update the council on what they've been doing. The previous rule was fairly traditional when it comes to reporting from those bodies, and it wasn't something that the council has followed since I've been here. And so, the amendments that are proposed would conform to what the current practice is, essentially that at least once a year, we have a representative give an update, and that would be done during the administration reports, which is where it currently is presented. Additionally, if there was, if they're working on items that needed to be updated more, they could come more than once. And finally, our last amendment that was proposed is the Spirit of Des Moines Awards. Currently have the mayor lead that committee. The mayor has requested to change that to the deputy mayor, so that's the proposal. We'd also talked about revamping those awards. There's a number of issues that we can probably look at at some point, and I believe there was a committee that was going to look at that, and I don't think we've gotten there yet, but at this point, the proposal is just to amend it to the deputy mayor. So at this point, there's a suggested motion, and I can answer any questions regarding the proposed rules.
I see Councilmember Banks back, and did I see Councilmember Mahoney raise a hand as well? Okay. Banks and back, Councilmember Banks.
So, going back to the board, I think it was the one before this, or just, yeah. So, are we talking about meetings or boards that we're on as council members, or is this, okay, because I was going to say, I've never provided anyone with an agenda, so I wanted to make sure that it was clear.
Yes. These are, these are council-created boards and committees, so Arts Commission, Senior Services, Human Services, and those, those committees.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, before I recognize, Councilmember Back, city manager, Bethesda's comment?
Yeah, you know, I think it's a great point, Councilmember Banks, and what we anticipate doing in the new year, we have a planning retreat with council, is walk through what are the appropriate responsibilities of each of our advisory committees, because a number of those have not changed for a long period of time, and I think they can be streamlined and focused a little bit, and then that plays into those committees being able to report back to council, Arts Commission and others, Senior Services Advisory, on specific types of responsibilities that the council's, is, you know, consistent that that's their responsibility. So, thank you.
Councilmember Back?
Yeah, Tim, so you and I talked quite at length earlier this week, and you gave me some good direction here. So I'm, I'm going to address this one subject, it's item number three on the things that we are amending. To expressly state that Des Moines is a drug and alcohol-free workplace, and that restrictions on drug and alcohol use at city hall also apply to council members, so, and when we had talked, you had referenced the city personnel manual, that wasn't included in our packet, but I did get some clarification from AJ tonight, and basically, the policy is if somebody's under the influence of pot, drugs, alcohol, and their supervisor or director sees that, they're immediately taken off the workplace, and depending on the nature of the situation, screening could happen and ultimately lose their job, because this is a zero-tolerance thing. So, in this scenario, in city council, our director would be our, our mayor, the presiding officer. So, I'm assuming this means, in the future, if this is adopted, that if the mayor suspects that a fellow council member is under the influence of pot, drugs, or alcohol, he could have that person removed from the dais and not participate in the council meeting. Is that basically correct?
There are certain actions that can be taken when a council member violates the rules, and so we would have to look specifically at whether or not removal from the dais would be one of them, but that would be in Robert's Rules of Order, which detail additional actions that the council can take that are outside of our council rules. But our council rules expressly cite to Robert's Rules of Order for any other specific instance that's not covered, but absolutely if there was a, it, it would lie with the mayor to enforce the rules of procedure.
But I would say that it never comes down to one person's opinion. If you've ever been in a leadership role with any organization, it's never, if one, if, if impaired behavior is observed, then it is elevated and discussed, and there is a, it has to be witnessed multiple ways and approached. So it, it doesn't come down to just the mayor, although the mayor does enforce council rules and process and procedure. It would be done, I would hope, any mayor would be engaging experts that reside here with the city, and, and process followed that way. It's not an accusation that would ever be made lightly.
It's good to know. That's good, good to know. And then the other thing is, it kind of stems out of a cool conversation I had with Vic the other day regarding confidentiality and things that are discussed in executive session. So, is this something where potentially there could be, how do you say it, levels of security clearance, where if an elected official who's going into executive session has been known to shoot his mouth off, that maybe certain topics in executive session that council member should not be allowed to attend because he doesn't have enough security clearance? Or, I'll take it a step further, somebody who is campaigning to get into public office, and they have publicly said that I'm going to just tell everything that goes on because the city needs to know. The city needs to know what's happening in private, and I'm, once I get elected, I'm going to tell everybody what's going on in that executive session, because the city deserves to know. Would that possibly disqualify somebody from executive session, because as directors, which, what we are, we're here to protect this corporation called the city of Des Moines, and there's certain attorney-client privileged things that we get information that the general public doesn't have, and they can't have, because we're trying to protect the city, and for us to just blab everything could hurt. So, I don't know, Vic, if you'd want to weigh in on that, but is there any possibility that certain security-level clearance things, a ranking thing, could possibly be put in? Go ahead.
I could just go ahead and say that the security clearance is the fact that the person was elected. When we have an executive session, all members of the city council will be entitled to attend that executive session. If a, a member of the council violates one of the council rules, that will have to be dealt with accordingly, but that's why the rules are in place.
And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that the RCW addresses the issue if someone were to breach client confidentiality, attorney-client confidentiality, and their personal liability that comes with that?
Yes, and that's part of the attorney general opinion, attorney general opinion as well as the state statute.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions or comments at this time? Okay, so, we have a motion, and then we'll go into discussion. So do we have a motion? I see Councilmember Netting.
I move to place draft resolution number 19-113, adopting the proposed amendments to the Des Moines City Council Rules of Procedure on the next available consent calendar for a second reading and approval.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, we have a motion, that's made by Councilmember Netting and seconded by Councilmember Back. Any discussion? I recognize Councilmember Banks.
Just, just quickly, I'm, I'm going to make an assumption that we can, as time goes on, and these rules sort of flex a little bit based on what goes on. sort of flex a little bit based on what goes on in council or what goes on that we should actually be aware of or hold ourselves to a higher standard that we can come back and ask to add or amend in the future. This is not just it, it's not once a year, correct?
The council can amend these anytime.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I see Councilmember Back, then Councilmember Buxton.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm glad that we are adopting this and we are holding ourselves to a higher level, because this is a important job. And we just saw on the news recently, a school bus driver full of kids was drunk. And if I was a parent, and I wouldn't want my kids on a bus with a drunk school bus driver. If I'm in an airplane 40,000 feet in the air, I don't want my airline pilot to be under the influence of drugs or alcohol. So the community needs to know that people that are legislating and running this city are doing so with clear mind. So I'm glad to support this.
Councilmember Buxton?
So this is just a little grammar thing. Number three, where it talks, at the end where it says that these restrictions on drug and alcohol use at City Hall apply to council members, I thought it might read a little nicer to say as well. Apply to council members as well, since you open with the workplace employees at City Hall. Just to, you don't have to, but just an opinion. And then a number four, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for five minutes instead of four. And, well, originally it was six, so it's three and three.
He's the one who's five minutes.
And I thought, I, I, I just think we, we can say four, but none of us ever take four. I think five is a reasonable ask, but here again, I think we almost always go over four.
Not many.
You don't think?
Some do.
And I'll, and I'll.
It's still a saving time, because it was three and three. So anyway, I'm going to put that out, you guys can vote on it.
You have to make a motion.
Oh, I'm.
Can I just say, as well, the grammatical stuff, we can just change that.
Okay.
But you would, you would have to make a motion to.
For number five?
Yes.
Or for five minutes?
Yes.
Okay, um, so then, before I do that, then I had a question about number nine, which is the first thing we addressed in regard to the proposal. Making a proposal, if a council member has an idea for an idea project event, that an idea might be to compile all of the ideas over a period of a year, and then the council can weigh if there are six of them, or three of them, or 10 of them in a study session, and make a decision before the budget. For example, this year, we passed the budget tonight. If we have a study session in September, let's say, and we have gathered all of these proposals for community events or ideas or things that we want to do, and then they get considered along with our budget that's coming up.
Yeah, you know, I understand the kind of spirit of where you want to get to, but I think that's a little unwieldy.
Okay.
Because we can't have a parallel budget process going along with whatever budget was reviewed at the August budget retreat, because from that.
Because you do it before.
From that point forward, we're trying to manage all of the inputs of the council. So we can't have a parallel track. And then sometime in September, you say, well, we want one, three, and seven. Well, that will replace elsewhere. So what I would suggest, if that's the. No, not, not to do it later, to do it earlier, to do it at the budget retreat itself. Take an hour for council initiatives that, and let council give us consensus response as to which of those they'd like to see in that year's coming budget.
Do you think that's a good idea? Do you think that where we, if we.
Do I think it's a good idea for us to go through a process of identifying every kind of interest that council has in, in, in a meeting? Do I think that's a good idea? Probably not. Just to be honest. But I think there, I think there has to be provision for initiatives coming from the council. I'm not sure how formalized we want to do that. That's kind of your call, actually.
Just a note on that is, that wouldn't necessarily need to be in the council rules, because the council, the mayor, or the city manager, or three council members could set the agenda. So if there was a specific meeting, a study session where the mayor, the city manager, or three council members wanted to compile these, they could. If we put that in the rules, we may have an issue where you have an event that's only three months away, but you're nine months away from June.
Right.
So this could be something that could be a procedure the council uses, but not necessarily something that's in the rules.
So leaving it flexible, that, that makes sense.
I also think that what's up there is, is what we asked for at the retreat is to have the form. And the perfect example is the flag pavilion, where you have a form, you fill it out. And one of the challenges is that we put an idea out there, and the devil's always in the detail. I have no way of knowing if the council member that brought forward the flag pavilion in the initial time knew that it would cost $35,000. Because again, you have to look at the structure and everything else that goes into it. But once it's understood, then the council has to decide, okay, this is something we would like to see go forward. And the staff has to have the time to look at it and say, okay, if you do this, that's $35,000 going here that doesn't go there. So I, I think that's the whole intent, is that, is we're just trying to codify what the council came forward with at the council retreat, and it does have a little bit of flexibility in it.
Yeah. Okay, so I'm good with all of that. And about the five minutes, should I make the motion now or wait till discussion is over?
You can make the motion.
Make the motion now, because we are taking amendments as we go.
Okay, so I'd like to amend or move that we amend item number four to five minutes total.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for a five-minute amendment, seconded by Councilmember Mahoney. We have a comment.
And I, I will support that with the caveat that the mayor would have discretion on certain jam-packed evenings, when we've got a full agenda and we may not even make it out on time, that the mayor could have the discretion, counsel, because we got such a heavy meeting, he could ask us to limit it to two or three minutes that night, because a lot of our stuff could be said at a next meeting when, when there's time.
Well, because we don't really have an official way to keep time on this, we could say thirty minutes, we could say two minutes, and we just kind of work through it. So the staff is putting in a light system for us, so we will be able to see when people vote, and, you know, how they vote, as well as the, you'll have, you'll have guidance on the amount of time that you spend. Now, that doesn't mean that extra time, if someone says, hey, I've got some really burning issues that I need to present to council, I'm asking for extra time, you can do that.
Okay, and then I'll also support it as long as it's not enforced, like we enforce Rick Johnson with the green light, yellow light, red light. So as long as we don't have to subject the same things that Rick does, then I can support this.
I hate to say it, that is how the light system works. And I saw Deputy.
Yeah, I was, I was fundamentally agree with Councilmember Buxton, but I think, you said it, if you get, was it four minutes? And if you, and if you need extended time, I think you ask for time, as opposed to say, our benchmark is here, because put your benchmark here, and then it's here, and then it's here, and then it's here. So I'm really in favor of the four minute, and then ask for additional time, and get that approved by the mayor. And you should be having a red light, green light, yellow light.
He should, he should.
So Rick shouldn't be the only one that is, has to put up with that, right?
I agree with Deputy Mayor Pennington. You keep moving the line in the sand, and then it just keeps growing. So I'm in favor for leaving it at three, but I'll concede and leave it at four. That's as far of the line in the sand I'm going to draw.
The only thing I'll add to it is, I, I think the four minutes, I think if your, if your thoughts are organized, it does guide you to beating, to being very concise and not running off on tangents. But if you need more time, very simply, you know, as said, I think my report's going to take longer than the normal amount of time. So I'm going to ask the council's indulgence and the chair, can I, can I get an extra two minutes or whatever? It does force us to plan a little bit, and I think that's, that's, I mean, we have been pretty good as a council, but there are nights, there's, there's no, there's no way I can move us along fast enough to get us out of here. We've hit executive session sometimes at 10:15 and gone, you know, 10:45. And, you know, or we've had to make these motions to extend. I'm glad that that opportunity exists, because there are nights that are really jam-packed. And, but I, I think four minutes is adequate, but we'll see how the vote goes down. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion of changing it to five minutes, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
A four to three vote.
Four to three vote, so the nays have it, it stays at four minutes. Okay, is there anyone else? I have a few items I'm going to bring up, so, before I take us to the final vote. So I would point out, council members, we, on council rule 7.1, where we talk about participation by telephone, we put this rule together a while back when it was, we felt that it may be necessary. I can honestly say that we have had a handful at maximum, it's usually due to a surgery, or a very important issue where somebody really wants, feels that they want to weigh in. There's a couple, you know, right now, we allow three of them, and I think it's really important for the council to be present in front of the public when we discuss things and when we vote. I do understand that emergencies have come up, as you know, my year has been filled with them. But I have never, never saw the need to use tele, to use telephonic participation. Even though our current council rule says three, I'd like to reduce it to one. I'd also like to say that council members get paid when they're at the dais. And a telephonic attendance, you're only there for a portion of the meeting. You're not having to go through the full preparation that all other council members are having to. And I, so I don't think, call-in should be compensated as part of the per diem. So my motion would be to remove telephonic, or to reduce telephonic participation to one per council member per year with no compensation involved per the, per diem. That's my motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I got a second by Councilmember Buxton. Discussion, I see Councilmember Bangs, and I see Back and Mahoney.
So I'm not sure here, but does, we also need to make sure that there, with that one call-in, that there aren't two people calling in at the same time.
That's already in the.
Okay, great.
This is page 383 of your packet.
There we are, okay.
Rule 7.1.
Yep, got it, thank you.
Specifically looking at item three. Councilmember Back?
So I, I only had to do the teleconference once, and it was because I was in Spokane at the AWC Annual Conference to interview and get this AWC Board of Director position. And I had to do that because there was a council meeting that night, and this is the first year we ever had a council meeting the week of the AWC Annual Conference. So I would, I would agree with this, I would just ask in the future, participation in the AWC conferences are pretty important. I know we haven't gone a lot, but I've made it a task to. And most of the cities that participate in the conference, most of those don't have council meetings that particular week either in that summer, but that's just my thought.
If I could make an observation, you hold the distinguished recognition of a AWC-certified council member, including the extended certifications or masters, if you will, and ran to Olympia to file for the position that you hold on the AWC, representing, is it 15 cities?
Sixteen cities.
Sixteen cities, sixteen cities total. With all that you did, council member, you had to call in once. That's why I yield to one, to say. We have Councilmember Mahoney, I believe.
That, he brought up an interesting point that I, I'm fine with the no-compensation piece of it. But any, in that particular example, he was actually being a representative and executing his duty as a city council member. So he called in, but he's still kind of doing the work, and I don't know if there's an exception for that.
Well.
Because he's executing his duties, but he's not able to be here for that piece of, that's all I'm saying.
And I would welcome a friendly amendment that says, unless serving in official and approved city business.
I, I'll make that friendly amendment.
I would accept that as a second.
And I would second it too, yeah.
Well, the secondor accepted the friendly amendment, so that's how the motion stands at this time.
Can I ask a quick clarification?
Of course you can. Says the city attorney.
Is this a, this is on subpart three, limiting the telephonic participation to one unless the council member is attending?
It's one with no per diem compensation unless the council member is participating on official and approved city business.
And so that would increase the number of telephonic they're allowed, or it would allow them to?
It would allow them to call in.
To get compensation.
And get compensation. Because they would, because as was pointed out by the, my colleagues here, that they are doing the work at that point.
Okay, but that would have been Councilmember Back's only telephonic participation for the year?
That's correct.
Okay.
And just to clarify, a Thursday night Seahawks game is not official Des Moines city business either.
That would be correct, even though it's really hard for me to say.
Sort of unsure on that.
Okay, with the friendly amendment, any further discussion? Councilmember Netting?
I just, I take exception to that. Some of us do get one vacation a year that may span several meetings, and we don't have control over a hot item that may be put on an agenda that we feel the need to, and vacations can always be canceled to be at a meeting. So I, I don't know if a vacation spans two meetings and there's a hot-button item, and it's the first reading and the second reading, and it's only one council member that's gone. I, I just take exception to the fact that it's been lowered down to one.
Okay, I, you know, again, I, when I look at the use, it's just, it's not, it's only been one. And to be honest with you, from, I understand, I understand vacations, and I wouldn't expect you to call in on your vacation, to be very honest with you. But that's, that's the choice that each elected has to make. So I, I understand your perspective.
Well, and I've only used it once out of the last six years anyway, so.
My point, thank you. So anyway, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion of reducing it to one without compensation unless serving in an official and approved city capacity? All those in favor of that, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion passes six to one. Okay. I had some reading time on point. Okay, I'm going to take us to page 390 of our packet, council rule number 19. Rule number 19B. It notes that each member of the council should speak for no more than 10 minutes unless granted the exception by a majority of the council. Since this is limited, I mean, since this is the majority of the council that grants the exception, I think 10 minutes can really be excessive. I would recommend that be, my motion is to reduce that from 10 to five. And again, they can turn to the council and say, council indulgence, I am asking to go for an additional amount. Uh, it makes all the sense in the world, there are some issues, we've talked about, uh, local activities, or people come back from the pick and there's a pressing issue or something like that, and you have to present to the council, that's not gonna be an issue here. It's really, um, and I think, I, I think this was actually brought up to, I don't, I don't know when it was brought up to Tim, but I think it had to do with, uh, a contentious council of the past, and they liked to have their freedom to grandstand.
Is that ten minutes total or ten minutes per time? Because you can speak to the motion twice. And actually, a third time with permission. So is it, is it ten minutes per time, or is it ten minutes total?
When you have the floor, you have the time that's, that's in here.
So.
When you're, when you're addressing a specific.
So if you reduce it to five, technically, with approval, you could get fifteen.
And you're speaking, and this is with regard to speaking to motions.
Right, speak, so that's what I mean, so speak, you can speak, uh, no member shall speak more than twice except by consent. So if you reduce it to five, that, that's, that's a lot of time.
It's a lot of time.
Yeah, yeah. So, just making that observation, and if you say yes, that's true, five minutes per time, that's a lot of time.
So I, I put the motion out there to, uh, council rule nineteen B, to reduce the time parameter to five minutes when addressing motions.
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Nettie, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Passes seven zero. I just want to point out on, uh, it's page three ninety-two of the packet, we are in, has to do with, uh, public hearings or, or comments. One of the things, it's item D under Rules of Conduct, uh, so it's, it's a little hard to follow right here, it's on, it's on page three ninety-two, item three, Rules of Conduct, down to D. You know, D, D isn't David. So, in prior service, if someone came in and was, and, and this addresses making personal, impertinent, slanderous remarks, or becomes boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive while addressing the council, they may be ordered to leave the meeting, and the presiding officer has the authority. The reason I'm calling this out is that we haven't, and, and it, really, me, and I've, and, and prior mayors have not really been the best at this. And I'm bringing it up because I think it's important that as a council, we remind each other, um, that when people come in and target and individuals and speak slanderously, that we have a process if they have a complaint. They need, it's a written process, and it comes forward. I, there is no change here other than just to create an awareness that says, we need to collectively work as a team, say, point of order, this is out of line. So, that's an awareness issue for every, for all the colleagues, all my colleagues here at the dais. I am not proposing a change, I just want, I think it's something that is overlooked, and we do have the right and the responsibility to protect our staff as well as protect each other, and if you want to file a complaint, we have a process for that, we have a, we have, if, especially with an employee, it's a written process, and slanderous attacks just should not be tolerated. We can have constructive conversation, name-calling, all those other things shouldn't happen. I'm getting to the tail end of things. So, it, there's an appendix A here that deals with the Spirit of Des Moines Award Program.
Yes.
And you did acknowledge one request that I had in there, however, um, if you, I'm now looking at page four twelve of the packet, and I'm down under the review committee. Having been involved in this for quite some time, um, I think, you know, it says the mayor and up to two other Des Moines city, uh, up to one other Des Moines City Council member shall serve on the committee. We've talked about replacing mayor with deputy mayor, and I believe that up to two other council members should serve. Part of the challenge is folks get on this committee and they don't know how to chair the meeting or how to move things through, because they truly don't understand the process, and sometimes they've never even seen the awards come out. So, I was proposing language that, um, the deputy mayor and up to two other Des Moines City Council members shall serve on the committee, and the, it could be city, uh, should, I guess at this point it would be the deputy mayor, uh, will be, or their council designee entrusted to choosing the remaining committee members. And then there's, after that, it says neither elected official shall chair or review the committee, and I don't think that's possible. I think we need to take that out of there, because we, I, every time we've tried to get somebody to take the chair, and they just don't, they don't know what to do. So I would propose that change in the language.
Why was it, and, why was it included in there? Do you know the history?
I do know the history. Uh, this came about when I was on the, serving on the council with the councilmember Musser and, uh, our former mayor Kaplan. We wanted to find a way to recognize people in the community, and, um, this was a former, uh, city manager, and their staff came up with this wording as they thought it should be, and we'd never been through the process, so we didn't know any better. So we did pass it as is written. But the intent and the actual way this plays out is, is totally different, and so I think it's important that we bring it, you know, um, the, the review committee portion together, and just point out, I mean, I, I'm fine with the nine members and no fewer than five, I think that's great, there are times we've had a problem just getting five, but if you allow a, a, a regular committee size of, of the council, and you, um, you know, and, and you, you work through the, the process where somebody who is comfortable, now it doesn't mean that a, a city, um, I, I, I don't think I alter the language to say that you couldn't have a community member chair it, but the fact is, they'd have to know how to do it. Or you'd have to create a, we could create a council member chair and, and a city co-chair. Whatever the council would like to see happen there, I'm fine with. I just want to make sure that we really get reality documented here. Councilmember Mahoney?
I mean, why don't we just run it like we do any of our committees, where the council members elect a chair, um, and the chair runs it? I think it's pretty straightforward. The, the process, as being participant this year, was that the citizens really got to nominate people and things like that, we were more facilitators, we talked about, we also maybe mentioned a few names that they might or not have mentioned, or something like that. But running the meeting efficiently and effectively, I think should be our role, and I think we just treat it like we would any other council, we, we basically nominate and elect one of us to chair that.
I, I'm, I'm fine with that. I mean, I don't know exactly what that wording would look like, I had written some things down, but the, the point in it would be the deputy mayor and up to two other council members, Des Moines City Council members shall serve on the committee, and the deputy mayor or their council designee, um, you, will be entrusted with choosing, you could say that, that committee, that committee, so it'd be those three, would be responsible for choosing the remaining committee members. I, I don't, or, or, and you could say, and I think it should be done with input from the council if they, if, if the, if full body has input. And then the, uh, elected will select the chair. So I'm, I make the motion that we change the wording to reflect that.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it passes seven zero. On the review process, I'm on page four thirteen, it says nominations are solicited from the community in September each year. It's not possible for the staff or for us to do this every year. We finished last year, uh, around this, actually a little earlier, with, and it's been a year, getting those ordered, coordinated, and out around essential city business. Consequently, I would suggest that we solicit them from the community in September during even-numbered years. So it'd be every other year, and the review committee shall be no later than October fifteenth. Finalists shall be chosen no later than, it should be the first two weeks of January, or by January thirty-first, because you're not gonna do it by January first. You could, but that's my input, that's, that's my motion.
If you do it even-numbered years, next year's twenty twenty, so you'll, you'll do this again next.
We will do it in twenty twenty, but the last time we did it was twenty eighteen.
Oh, I see, I.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
Discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Seven, we passed seven zero. And the public acknowledgement, um, I'm, there's, uh, wording in here, it says the Spirit of Des Moines Award shall be given out at a public meeting or event by the mayor. I would like that to reflect by the mayor and council upon the earliest date after the committee selection that works for the recipients in the council, would be how I would modify that wording.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Seven zero. Thank you very much for indulging me on that, I think this will help to have the Spirit of Des Moines reflect, uh, and, and our council rules truly reflect, um, an efficient way to operate. With that, we have the motion to place the draft resolution, um, nineteen thirteen, adopting the proposed amendments of the Des Moines City Council Rules of Procedure on the next available consent calendar, calendar for second reading. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Passes seven zero. All right, thank you, council. At this time, the council will go into executive session. The purpose of this executive session is to, is the performance of a public employee under RCW four-two dot three zero dot one-one-zero-one G. The executive session is expected to last twenty minutes, you're all more than welcome to say, however, no formal action will be taken at the end of that, um, executive session. I will note that, that, uh, that, that will be the last item of tonight's meeting, our next meeting will be November twenty-first, twenty nineteen. We are. I'm sorry? Oh, our twenty minutes, um, our twenty-minute session will take us to ten oh-two. Okay, at this time, we are in executive session.